We're live now.
I'm just trying to.
I feel so.
But otherwise.
Our show there was.
In your.
I'm very. So. Yeah. Yeah. You can't. Such all the reading.
This is.
There's nothing.
Why don't you?
Oh, he's filed, built down here for the super five years of meeting. The order. June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five with a moment of silent meditation. And we'll play this to the flag.
As I lead to the flag, I don't think. At two degrees of. Which day is today? One eight. Is it this fall? Was there a year of justice call?
He just concluded an executive session. Starting at five o'clock and dealing with personnel issues.
I'm making a motion to approve May twenty seventh. Going to five for the supervisors meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. Then move the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Wearing in of Claire Small McBoy as township supervisor by Judge Nancy Fair. Honorable Judge Nancy. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
Want to come on with the Bible?
Yeah.
The whole ground. Great.
Yeah.
So just going to let you. Or raise some Chinese. That you hold the Bible. So.
You can get some pictures after.
Ready? Yeah. Please repeat after me. I. I state your name. Claire Small McBoy. Do solemnly swear. Solemnly swear that I will support, that I will support. Obey. Obey and defend. And defend the Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States of America. The United States of America. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the common law. Common law. That's. And that I was discharged and that I will discharge and you need the duties of supervisor. Supervisor in East Brownfield. Doing this fall intention. Just. Just to defend something and that's. With fidelity. With fidelity. Congratulations. Right. Can you get a picture?
Uh, yeah.
I know you suffer. With a three. One three year. One is through the township and one will leave.
It's.
Congratulations.
Go on. Picture. That's up on that side. You're doing it for me. Hello. Grab my door. Everybody. This way. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. You got.
I make a motion.
I'm sorry, as we now have five supervisors. We're going to reorganize. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Wilson Lambert as a twenty twenty five Board of Supervisors Chair. Second.
Then move the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion Paris.
Oh, we don't. I'm gonna just.
I can make a motion to appoint Claire Small Magamoy as a twenty twenty five forty supervisor's chair.
Second. Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Beautiful.
Right.
Roger. Um, yeah.
Points around to electional vice chairperson.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Demoski as a twenty twenty five board supervisor vice chair.
Aye.
Jack.
Oh, I'd like to second.
On the discussion.
Vote. Right. Inside. Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Aye. Where should I be?
Where should Paris? Congratulations. All right, now we're gonna go on to our fire departments and department of emergency services. May Westwood Fire Company Fire Chief's report submitted for the board and resident review. The May Westwood Fire Company EMS report submitted for board and resident review. The May Modena Fire Company Fire Chief's report submitted for the board and resident review. And may Medina Fire Company Fire Chief's report dispelled. Calls only submitted for board and resident review. And may Medina Fire Company EMS report submitted for board and resident review. Are there any questions or comments about the reports? Okay, moving on to our treasuries report submitted May thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I make a motion to approve the May thirtieth, twenty twenty five treasures report as presented. Second. I do have one question. For every passes. Um, when I was looking at the treasures report, I noted on the codes and zoning that. The that we are two hundred fifty three percent over budget. At this point, can we explain that?
Um, so if you're looking at, if you're looking at the budget for thirteen point three ten, those are the fees that we pay to Keystone Services. That's our third party building inspectors, owning officer, they handle everything with building permits to code enforcement. So if you look, the township received a building permit fee of three hundred six thousand dollars for the Coatesville area school district. That's to inspect the new elementary school. Keystone actually received fifty five percent of the permit. Uh, so they received fifty five percent of three hundred six thousand dollars. That was the expense. But then if you look on the income side of the budget, uh, the township actually received income forty five percent of the three hundred six thousand dollars. Sure, if you're looking at the budget, that line item is three sixty two point four one. Um, and again, that reflects the revenue from the, uh, from the permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions? Move to vote. All in favor of approving the treasurer's report.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, moving on, um, payment authorizations. Make motion to approve the payment authorizations for the period of mid twenty 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 five through June twenty fourth, uh, twenty twenty five. It's. The total amount is three hundred sixty thousand, six seventy five thirty two. Right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So you move on to the managers' report.
All right, hi, good evening, everyone. First on the list is. Uh, proposed resolution, uh, two thousand twenty five slash fourteen. Um, just, just a little background here. Former state senator Dinman presented a plan to recognize August thirteenth as Zachariah Walker Remembrance Day. And authorize the installation of signage on Strode Avenue. Which would designate a portion of Strode Avenue as Zachariah Walker Avenue. And, uh, there is a proposed, uh, resolution in the board's packet.
I make motion approving resolution number twenty twenty five dash fourteen, recognizing August thirteenth. As Zachariah Walker Remembrance Day will monitorize victims of racial violence, authorize the installation of commemorative signage, doesn't mean. That's meaning for Strode Avenue as Zachariah Walker Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Before we do that, just make sure to ask for a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll learn.
No, that's okay.
Is there any public comment?
Can you give us a brief history of, uh, of this? Of this purpose?
Sure, so I, I can try my best from the recap from the last meeting. The Senator Dinman was here and he had a couple of representatives with him, um, who walked through it. I think this individual was one of the few lynchings that occurred. Somebody prepared their book. Few lynchings that occurred in this region, um, back in the day, so there's gonna be a series of events coming out. They said in mid-August to commemorate that and to do a bunch of different things they talked about last time, but this is a. An honor and memory of that.
You're gonna, I have a signage already in West Sebastian for a number of years. I'm not refuting that, I'm just saying that does it not exist by the roadside? Established by. And on the other side of the month, Pennsylvania. Not noting the lynchery during the thirties, or was it the late twenties?
So I, I don't know. I'm trying to recap what was, where was that last? I, I didn't know.
Yes, there's a story. Yeah, the Marchers, but yeah, but they're doing it the special remembrance day coming up.
And is this the first annual Remembrance Day? Would this be the first? Commemoration of such an event this year?
Yeah, I, I didn't know that.
Well, does anybody know?
Because that was.
Yeah, we have, the township has not done it before.
I'd like to call a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. You want to Medina Fire Company to request for capital funding for twenty eighteen Pierce enforcer engine.
Make a motion to pay a seventh loan installment payment of twenty thousand dollars to Medina Fire Company for the two thousand eighteen Pierce enforcer engine. Second.
Are there any public comments?
Uh, just, just a little background here. I don't, I don't know if anyone from Medina is here. We obviously release this money every year. For the purchase of the eighteen engine. Uh, the township is currently contributing thirty six thousand, six hundred dollars a year to Medina Fire Company, thirty six thousand, six hundred to Westwood Fire Company. Um, for capital improvements, so this twenty thousand dollars would come out of their thirty six six allotment.
Any other public comments? All for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I'm moving on to resignation of members from the municipal building committee.
I make motion accepting the resignation of Mike Demoski, who is the municipal building committee, is determining twelve thirty one twenty. We'll play.
All for a vote?
No.
Now, any public comments? And call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thanks for your work, Mike. Appreciate it.
I make a motion accepting the resignation of Jennifer Wright for the municipal building committee, which is determining twelve thirty one twenty twenty five. Second.
Any public comment? All for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Jennifer. She's here.
So we, um, have anyone applying for these? For the application, please.
Um, municipal building committee, we have not received, we have any, um, applications right now, but we will post those.
See ya.
Thank you.
Uh, next, next on the list is the, um, motion to approve proclamation that declares July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Uh, did they vote on this? Sorry.
They voted.
Okay. All right, uh, the next one is the proclamation that declares July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five is Lafayette Day. There is a proposed proclamation in the board's packet. And I know that Kat, uh, had volunteered to, uh, attend. There's a breakfast reenactment at the Stotsville Inn on July twenty seventh. I know you had volunteered to read the proclamation, um, at that event, so. This would be the proclamation that would be read the, um, breakfast on July twenty seventh.
Thank you. The honor.
And there's a proposed motion to.
Thank you. Make a motion approving the proclamation that declares July twenty seventh, twenty twenty five as Lafayette Day. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? All in favor?
All right.
Thanks, and we will. We will frame the proclamation, Kat, so when you present it, add that to this, and we'll get all the board members to sign it as well. So this is just, this is just a sample that's in there.
But also good paper.
Good paper. It's not a paper. Uh, and, and last that I have, last on my list, um. I just wanted to note that the township will begin posting the agenda packet. Uh, I know that we post some stuff on the township website. We're gonna scan the entire agenda packet and put it on the township website. Uh, hopefully it'll be right next to the, uh, the agenda and we plan on doing that, uh, beginning in July, so. It'll cut down on paper and residents will have access, uh, on their phones or on their tablets, uh, to review the package. And that's all I have.
Yes, good question. How many chairs ahead of the meeting more? I close with this issue.
Uh. Hopefully Monday afternoon when we post the agenda. Still kind of working out the details, but that's, uh, that's what we're planning.
Okay, moving on, um, new business? Well, you should.
That was.
That wasn't this, so, uh, there you go.
Yeah, so the, um, the collective bargaining agreement between, this says teams, it's really the police department and the township is up renewal. It's been negotiated by the township with the, uh, union representatives. And, uh, I can summarize the basic terms of what it, um, entails. It's a, it's kind of carry forward an amendment to the existing three-year collective bargaining agreement, so. All those are the things I'm gonna mention. Everything else in that agreement stays the same. Kind of bring forward that. It would be a three-year agreement from January of twenty twenty five through the end of twenty twenty seven. For wages, this is what people most often focus on, wages for twenty twenty five. Be a four percent increase. Twenty twenty six, a four percent increase. Twenty twenty seven, a four and a half percent increase. Um, there are a couple provisions that recognize and are memorializing what the existing. Um, standards are and operational protocols for the department, those. Those include, um, the shift times, when they start, that their twelve-hour shifts, and the, the number of hours over two weeks, the number of hours per year. And then something called Kelly time, Kelly time essentially guaranteed overtime for officers. Um, there's no change in that, that, that this is proposing, it's just memorialize what they're already getting. Um, also memorialize what they're already getting in holidays, they would get chewed teeth, which they've already received past year or two, I think. Um, for a sellback of unused vacation and sick time. Those are two different categories, sellback of each, allows officers to sell back unused vacation, sell back unused sick in December of each year. For vacation that does not carry over, there is a carryover under the existing agreement of sick time. And, um, so the, the main purpose of that one is to work staffing, uh, issue, you don't want everybody to take December off. Uh, up there. Um, health insurance, it just memorializes that the, um, plan will be selected, there will be a difference, if it equivalent, or this other one agreed between the township and the department. And then the last, uh, provision is, uh, relates to the pension plan. So currently we're with something called PMRS, that's the state pension plan system. They have to do these actuarial, actuarial studies whenever they make any plan changes. They, we're, we're all waiting for that from, um, from PMRS, because of some of the, um, tweaks and changes that would be made under the pension plan considerations that were brought up and discussed with the union. Before those can be implemented, though, it needs, you need that study from the state. So we're waiting on that, so the Act six hundred provision that's in the MOU just notes that if we need to open that, this back up to deal with that pension issue, that we would do that, there's parameters for work. Those are the broad brush strokes, and I may have, oh, field training officer. This provides that when an officer is in the field training another police officer, in addition to their hourly rate, they get another a dollar seventy an hour to, to take on that additional responsibility. Those are the basis of the broad brush strokes.
I forget, we had a motion before you.
Not yet.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Proose a motion, um, I've moved that the board approved and authorized the execution of the bargaining agreement between East Fallon Field Township and the in the form as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm okay, thanks.
And to vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Well, thanks Scott for all the hard work in this.
Thank you, and, um, you know, we have, just wanna emphasize, we have a great police department here, um, I think this is a fair contract for both parties, I wanna emphasize that. The, uh, I, I appreciate the professionalism of our police officers and the police officers that, um, that the township negotiated with, uh, they, they handled themselves well, so just wanna give a shout out to the police, I think, uh,
And your chief.
And the chief.
Good job.
That's all I have for my appointments.
Thanks.
On the environmental advisory committee, uh, no report was submitted. Park and Recreation Board, no report submitted. It's a proposal for the YMCA to create a brandy line for pit trucker. And a simple dumb to, yeah, if we're gonna table that, um, we were going to have our health fair on July twelfth. Um, and due to some cancellations of various participants and vendors, we are changing the date, so we'll be canceling that event and restructuring our August second event. On the Star Spangled, uh, Parade is on Saturday, June twenty-eighth at nine AM. And an update to our twenty twenty-five summertime music series, uh, the next concert event is July seventeenth. We had a turnout, pretty good, right?
Okay.
For the concert, it was a nice first one we had.
Yeah, the first concert was good, it was a little, little more laid back, um, we had, we had borderline bluegrass, um, they were good, it was, um, definitely, I know there was a couple hundred people at least that were there, we had, uh, food vendor. Um, so I think it was a nice turnout, a little bit hot that night. My, my, under attendance.
And we get signs up for the parade, we have any signs up? As I had asked before.
Ah.
The banners up.
Is there?
Yeah, we put the banners up by the park, and we created it back in Facebook, and we've been posting reminders.
Thank you. There any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes.
Um, for the several years that we've had the entertainment for the summertime concerts series, do we make any money as a township on, from the um, concert performers? Do we get anything for that? For our performers?
Oh, we actually pay them as part of the contract.
We pay them.
We pay them from the Park and Recreation Fund, uh, the township.
Sponsorships, we get total sponsorship, and if there's anything left over, it goes into the parking rent, so we're not actually paying anything for the concerts.
What is the, what is the average cost of, that we pay them through the sponsorship? Just curious.
Cost of what?
Of paying the performers.
Performers?
Yes.
Any, could be fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. Depends on their popularity. Eric, did you wanna say anything? Just about the, um, about the concert series.
Oh, uh, that's really intentional, yeah, so, um, we will probably combine the children's concert on August second with a health fair and make it a family day. Why did we get everybody to participate, that was going to participate for the health fair? But there will be a children's concert as well. And to answer a question, like, just for an hour of the children's concert, funds about five hundred dollars, of which comes out, or that comes out of the park and rec fund, because that is a park and rec event. Uh, Denise is gracious enough and, and Scott to get the sponsors, um, for the big concerts, but we put the bill for the children's concerts.
Can we get sponsors for the children's concert? I mean, what, what sponsors, what sponsors are sponsoring?
Well, that, that would be a question, for, you have Lurie and Bank, or what?
Tens of trummies of getting sponsors as far as I can.
Pennsylvania area.
Yeah, we have just, we have a handful of corporate and, uh, our bank, Allen Myers.
It's the biggest one.
Yeah, we, we raised, we raised twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
About twelve thousand.
Uh, which actually more than covers the cost of the concert, so, uh, it, it helps with the park and rec fund.
But we don't.
We can only go to our sponsors for so many.
And we can't dip it into the same one, there are only so many businesses in it, businesses around here.
And just to round out the cost benefit. Cost that the township doesn't get a bill for is the hundreds of hours that our park or rec volunteers give to the event that makes the, all the action behind the scenes. I mean, it couldn't happen without Denise and Scott, and but that caused, people volunteer hundreds of hours, they go ball, they, they pick baskets. These things are bought and paid for several times over.
I know Seattle laws to sponsor, sponsor, so.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? All right, move on to the planning commission, uh, no report submitted. Laurie Grisik, uh, accepted the resignation of Mike Naboski.
That's part one.
If I could like to change mine, Mike, you know.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Mike Naboski from the planning.
Second.
All in favor? Any comment? Thanks for your service.
Thank you for your service.
That's a hard job. All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint. All in favor, call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jerry Dickinson to the planning commission with a term ending twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Any comments? Or concerns?
I got some concerns.
There he is, there he is, thanks.
Very, thank you, standing up, Jerry.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Police Department?
I know, briefly.
Make the department report submitted in order in resident review. Public Works Department, the May Road Department report submitted for the board and resident review. Regards to summer seasonal employment, there was recommendation to hire seasonal public works employee.
Make a motion to appoint Brian Hires as seasonal grass better than public works department, and a failure rate of seventeen.
Second.
Any comments or concerns? All for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. In regard to a purchase of a concrete mixer, I make a motion approving the purchase of a Honda concrete mixer in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and ninety-five from Gap Power in the township's capital bond.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Uh, just a quick overview on that one, um, we have not had, um, actually, I, I spoke to our road foreman about this, they, these guys have actually been mixing concrete like they did in the eighteen hundreds. Um, so they were mixing, mixing small batches in, in a tub, um, which kind of hinders their effort, so this, this is really a step forward, it brings more efficiency to the township. Uh, these guys are doing storm drain repairs, and instead of mixing small batches at a time, it just allows them to, um, to make the batch of concrete all at once, and hopefully, uh, it will help them to better keep up with, uh, storm drains, so.
Great, great idea. Can we, I, I adjust her for that?
Yep.
So is there any other comments? All for the vote?
Aye.
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 On historical permission, no report was submitted. Any old business?
And I asked if they wanna just give a quick update on where we stand with the default process, or yearly audit process.
Um, audit's complete. The audit was completed, we have final report, I think earlier to residents.
And then, I guess, when we get the professional he comes and presents, that's just for the little team officially.
Tentatively scheduled for next one, but I'm not sure.
But in the meantime, everything's been submitted, and it's kind, it's kind of done besides the presentation. Thank you very much.
I have an old business question.
Yes.
I know, Al, you had brought up, I think a few meetings ago, about potentially putting the diagram back on the table. It was a ten-second conversation, um, there were only four people here, and those two were kind of adversarial. I didn't know if that was gonna be planned, so to be put back on the table.
I, I can go on the record saying that, if, if it, if it did ever come back up for discussion, I, I would probably be against what we've passed previously, but currently as well.
But, I mean, who would it take, would it just take one supervisor to put the motion on the table, like, how does that work?
Right, it's happening in general, anybody, if, anyone of the board members could ask to have something put on the agenda, so it could be discussed publicly, whatever, everything, right?
For the next meeting, for the next meeting.
Well, we're in a meeting. Like, you, you know, you ask us, a lot of us, do you have any, you know, so that's the process.
And then, Mike, from a legal perspective, does it, it still has to go through, like, daily local, it has to be, even if you're removing?
Yeah, 'cause it'd be a law, you know, ordinance to undo what was already done, so it's the same thing, it'd be, yeah, fortunately, that's not a zoning ordinance requirement, so it's a short, we want it advertised at once, it's said twice.
Yeah.
Um, so we're just take, if the board wants to do that, we have to draw up the ordinance to repeal it, and then have it advertised, or ready for, you know, being.
A public fair. And then, do we, do we pay anything to update the E-code three sixty?
Uh, so the township pays, uh, annual maintenance fee, I think it's around nine hundred bucks, um, just for the, for the maintenance and of the, um, of the actual site. Uh, I, I saw your write-to-no request for the, um, uh, long story short, we never, um, we never codified that ordinance, it was put in as a new law. And they were looking for the documents, receipts, how much we paid for codification, it was never codified, so that would have fallen under, um, that specific law falls under new laws.
What, what does codification mean, does that mean it's not?
Yeah, it doesn't mean it's not valid, it's, um, the, the old school way before electronics was you had a zoning ordinance book, and whenever there are new changes, or ordinance book, whenever there are changes, they'd be iterative, so it'd say, instead of re-adopting the entire thing, it would say, section four oh five A is changed to say this. So to, to find out what four oh five A's actually said, the old school way, you'd have to go into four oh five A. Usually you make a note, like, hey, this has been amended, and you've gotta go to the back of the book and check each of those, and it's kind of like following the bouncer's ball. With, um, E-code and the other services that are out there, they now do it for you, where they'll take the new stuff and they'll kind of hold it in, there's a, a charge for that.
We just haven't done that, yeah.
Yeah, most municipalities don't do it until they build up over time, because the, it's, it's not cheap.
Thank you.
I, I don't know if it's considered old business, it has to repay that. I assume Strasburg was paid by Pico, correct? Pico's in charge of, I'm sorry. Boy, would that be bad. Strasburg, it's the Penn, um, something like Springdale, I don't know if that's Penn Dot or us. They did, whoever did it, it was, it was a nice job coming up the hill, then we had Loop Road. And they, I think they were leaving their equipment there in the triangle for a couple days, and there was a little bit patching there. Is that Penn Dot or was that us? Who, who patched on Loop Road, I got a short piece there.
I, I'd have to check.
Okay, yeah, because some stuff was patched, but they left one really deep pothole, it was right there. Loop Road was how one? I, I don't even know, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Do I contact Penn Dot?
We would know if it's attached or not.
Yeah, I can look into that, um, if there's a pothole, if it's a tech, uh, loop, you said Loop Road?
Loop.
That is a township road, uh, if there's a pothole there, do you know what the nearest intersection, what's the nearest, uh?
Buck Run and Dover.
Buck Run and Dover. I'll, I'll report it to, um, our public works.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not real big, but it has to be very deep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other old business?
Did you have some, 'cause I have another. Do you have anything?
No.
Um, I was wondering, in the newsletter, I didn't get it, but that could be for a hundred reasons. Luckily, my father lost the championship and gave me his. Why wasn't any new building writ, you know, an article in the newsletter?
Anything about the newsletter?
Nothing about the building in the, in the newsletter, and the newsletter's supposed to be, woo, this is East Fallon Field, this is what we're doing. Where is it going?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good suggestion, uh, we have put articles in there. Uh, I think you're right, I don't think there was anything in the last edition, uh, but we have done articles on the, uh, municipal building. And, uh, you know, we appreciate any input, so.
It just seemed really weird.
Yes.
One of the most important things going on here. Was, was just mentioned at all.
Appreciate your input.
There's no ulterior motive to it, I mean, we have so many articles, you do six months, and, you know, if, there's not a whole lot, it, nothing has been decided.
Which article is higher priority than a potential?
I'm not gonna get into an argument.
You don't have to, we know the answer.
No, you don't know the answer, Shane.
She's already told me to shut up today, so.
Yeah, because you were being, just, the way you act at board meetings is not appropriate. When you clap and yell like you're at sporting, of course.
Okay. Please address the board. Okay, let's not, have a conversation.
Yeah, we appreciate your input, uh, we're not trying to keep out any information, and if residents, you know, are looking for certain information, um, it's good to know, so.
And, and, and just, I mean, what I know about the building, there is, there isn't much to write about. And, and, and just, I mean, what I know about the building, there is, there isn't much to write about. There's nothing has been decided or is on the table for discussion. Like, where the conversation is happening is that the voting committees are elsewhere. There's not really anything to write about.
I mean, we have it. I think we did, we paid thirteen thousand per plan for thirteen thousand square foot building. The next step would be to pay a hundred sixty thousand for a detailed plan for the building. And all right. And that is a building that will cost at least eight million according to the architects and at least twelve million according to a grant that was proposed for it. So that's a lot of good information. A lot of residents don't even know what questions to ask because, you know.
I would, I would suggest that you write up that paragraph and submit it to the president.
Like.
Those facts are all. Not that none of that is written.
Information.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, seriously, the public, if they have articles, they want to. Put them in, it could be considered a challenge.
Uh, we haven't done, we haven't done that before. I mean, if you want to submit something and we can look at it.
People are educated or passionate about topic. Then.
I think the big topic is, can I say something? The big topic is the school board is going to send your taxes out, which is three point five percent increase. That's a big thing. That's way bigger than.
That's not a township.
So you're all going to get bummed with that one.
What program is the newsletter written in?
Red Herring.
Did I assume the answer to that question?
What program is the newsletter written?
It hometown press publishes it. They don't, they don't charge us for the printing of it. We send the articles to them and they're going to give us an ebook. And then we print it out. So I don't know how they, I don't know how they design it. It's not controlled.
People have recommendations for things you'd like to see in the newsletter, please.
Yeah, that's definitely right.
If it's important to you to, to hear information, we will figure out a way to get it in there. We think that that's important. Okay. So just please email the board.
Thanks for your input on that.
Thanks for all your work Denise.
Definitely.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
And, and you may know, you may not know, in, in terms, I'm in residential, different than commercial. In terms of the building process, has there been given a guesstimate, broad guesstimation of how long from where we are now, the planning process is expected to.
Uh, that's, yeah, I don't have the answer. It's in the feasibility study, which I believe is on the website, on the township website. So it's.
We're talking about. A year, months, like where?
Planning process?
Yeah, like, or, and again, if you don't.
Less than a year, I believe. Yeah.
And that's to get to what stage of a plan? Cause I know there's multiple stages of plans.
Right. That's my understanding from that feasibility study. But it's, it's on the website. It's a document.
And there are currently two openings as of this meeting.
Sir, um, any new business?
Yes. Um, on happier notes, on happier notes, I just wanted to let the board know, um, that I'm speaking for Jennifer White, who's not here. She's heading up the America two fifty event for next year. It's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of her signing of the declaration that they dependents for planning, you know, a year long event for the township. We had a meeting, um, fortunately, the historical commission and Mike and, uh, the parks committee are joining forces to plan these events. We have a whole list of ideas. Jennifer put them out. We have a lot of good ideas that came out of that meeting. So we will be meeting, hopefully, you know, you're having a meeting on Wednesday, Wednesday, July second, um, at the historical commission. So we'll be, we'll be publishing those. I'll be putting it in the community page and the parks page. Then I don't think the historical page. And we'll post on the nation. But, um, you know, I urge anybody, if you know anybody that's interested in helping out, we will need a ton of volunteers. So this is not just something the historical commission can do and parks can do. This is a whole year long celebration of our country. So I hope to see more people there next Wednesday, July second at six thirty, correct? Six thirty? Oh no, I, we meet at six thirty. I know it's July second.
Okay, and the date right then, yes.
It's okay. But it'll be in the, uh, community. So we need volunteers to show up.
Here, yeah. We sit, there's tables for you. It may be the most people that I've ever been in.
Yeah. Yeah, we actually have a lot of people. We had a, you know, actually have moved the tables around. So I was real pleased to see everybody that came out. So.
And I think there's some really good ideas.
Yes, definitely.
Is there any other new business? Or public, um, comment?
I have a question. And this is for Mike Roddy. Um, are township emails considered public record?
It depends. So, um, it's got to deal one with public, uh, public action item or public conduct. And then it also is subject, there are, I think, twenty-seven, twenty-eight exceptions under the act. There's a whole bunch then of case law exceptions and then there's exceptions even in that mission. So.
But without exception, they are public record.
No, with exception.
There are, I'm saying, without the exceptions, there are emails that are public record.
Uh, there can be, yeah.
And I have more. Do we, uh, do we have a list of all the township assets and their value?
We have a list from our insurance company. It shows a list of assets, but it's not fixed asset ledger that shows depreciation, you know, purchase price, current value. We don't have that level since we're cash basis accounting.
We just have the asset and the value.
I have a list, you know, of insured assets that we have and.
And we have, we have depreciated assets as well, right? So we would have.
We do not because we're.
We don't appreciate it. Okay.
We depreciate it as we buy them.
Gotcha. Okay. So there is a list of assets somewhere. It's just not technically a fixed asset registered.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then do we, do we have next steps for the township building? Cause we haven't heard anything in a while. I guess, I don't know. There hasn't been a meeting lately, but.
Yeah, the township is, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now. We're waiting, uh, number one, we're waiting for HUD to get back to us with the grant paperwork. We've submitted everything to them. Um, I think the township would be more comfortable if the paperwork came back to us before, uh, we contract with the engineer and the architect. So we're just in the process of hopefully hearing back from them soon. Um, and then the other part of it is once we get that HUD paperwork back, uh, we know that there will have to be an RFP process, uh, which is a little bit simpler. Uh, it just means that we have to request out for proposals, even though the municipal building committee selected Heckendorf and Childs. They can still go with Heckendorf. It just means that we have to do the RFP process, um, requesting other, uh, proposals as well from other contractors. So we're just kind of waiting on those things right now.
And just for clarity, it was our, our consultants estimated eight million dollars for the plan that they put together. Is that correct? Yes. And then also you submitted a grant that estimated from a construction company that it was twelve million dollars. Is that correct? Scott, I mean, you wrote the grant.
Um, that was a number that was, that was a number that happened before. That number was thrown out before we did feasibility study. So the feasibility study was more realistic. The grant proposal was really just throwing out, uh, a number to get a grant. There wasn't a lot of, uh, facts, facts behind it because we hadn't done the feasibility study yet.
But it was a construction company that did twelve million dollars and consult that did the eight million dollar, but is that correct? Or an estimate? I think it says it was a construction company started with a B that did the twelve million dollar estimate on the bill.
That was a very rough, very rough estimate.
But it was a construction.
Based on a, right, um, construction management company.
Sure. Okay, yes.
And, um, I think just to build on that, and Scott, if I'm correct, um, once this, once we do get the HUD grant and everything, that's when we sit down with, I guess, the architect or whoever we decide to do. And that's when we really start figuring what we want in it and what, how we want to tell them.
Yeah, that's, that's once, once we contract with the architect and the committee and public, of course, can attend those meetings, can discuss and certainly put a little away at certain things, um, to get a better idea of the cost.
So is there anything we can do? Like send out a postcard to everyone, letting them know this is the plan? Like, can we reach out to the public to at least inform them that this is a big deal and there are meetings coming up and when they are, so they can attend? I mean, there's eight thousand people, right, in the township. Not all of them are in the Facebook group. Not all of them follow your webpage. Not all of them tune into this live stream. So how, how can we best notify everyone in the township that this is happening so that those people have and?
Right. I think we're certainly open to any ideas and we appreciate, uh, the feedback that you bring to us. So we'll consider those requests.
Can you put it on the signboard out front? I mean, that reaches a few more people anyway. We're not like municipal building ready tonight or, you know, whatever date. But you add more meetings because I've asked over and over again in the past, um, falls on deaf ears, but like, not recently, about putting all the park meetings, park and rec meetings and the times and the, the historical commission, whatever meetings are had, they used to do that when we first moved here. All the board meetings, not just the supervisors' meetings were posted on that signboard. So you, you at least track drivers.
We can talk, we can talk to the park, uh, we can talk to our road crew about it.
Scott, that's a picture on the screen, but maybe just put it in this for future discussion. I remember in the, over the last couple of years, we did, we had, we had looked into one of those portable electronic signs.
Yep.
That would try to accomplish, you know, your physical, you know, the billboard and of course, our cash of his bank setting up where you put it. But it was a question of, I think it was like thirty grand to buy one of these things, but it would allow us to in real time advertise meetings on a very frequent basis.
Yeah, we tested it. We actually brought that unit out and we tested it in front of the municipal building here. And the issue was the amount of time that where our car goes by, how much time they can actually see the sign. And it was determined that this was not a good, uh, site for an electronic.
It wasn't, the tag wasn't working a lot, I guess. For that type of technology.
Right.
So we have been trying.
So how, how long does it take to change the letters, like from meeting to meeting?
And do we have enough letters?
We'll have to, we'll have to put it in the next, in the next year's budget.
Preview.
We'll put it in the capital fund budget for next year.
So I mean, can we, I mean, this is, this is the board, right, talking to the man, like, can we, I mean, residents would like to see more dates out there from all meetings. The people running the meetings would like to see it. So can, I mean, can we just make it happen? Like, we're, I don't know what more there is to.
Having been in the sign business.
Right.
The banner that we put out first as a sign in front of seventeen across the street apart. They're fairly readable because you get stuck at that intersection for a little bit. Now, of course, the park wants to advertise their stuff. But even if, you know, we have one facing one way and one facing the other or the diagonal intersection, if we put them a banner, which might be a couple of hundred dollars. It says this meeting, whatever night, and we leave the one spot blank and maybe we can put little clear corners that we could slip the letters in. You can make them changeable. You know, you have one banner for historic, you have one banner for parks and rec, one banner for board of supervisors, whatever. We change the month, we change the numbers and obviously the last thing for the year, it isn't that hard. We could put one up. Maybe in the triangle at Loop Road, uh, Springdale and the intersection, you know, where the guys live, his house fall down. Um, near Triple Fresh. Even maybe Triple Fresh can have something somewhere that people could see. Cause people are always going in and out there. Park corners. And maybe out here, but a banner. And we keep it brief, you know, blah, 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 meeting, blah, 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 meeting. It's always at six thirty. It's always right here. And we could advertise all the meetings again, not just the board of supervisors with their, you know, fifteen letter alphabet out front. It wouldn't be that hard. I could help if you need help. You can have that assigned.
A bottom.
Assigned committee. I could also be helpful in the newsletter.
But it seems like it's just insurmountable. I know somebody brought it up a year ago when we put other meetings out there. And it just kind of like, nothing came with it. Nothing happened. But.
Well, the question is, no matter how many signs you put up, you're not going to guarantee you're going to get every person to see it. So it's always.
Takes five minutes.
It's always a compromise. It's always a compromise. Like Connie, as soon you go through the exercise, what's enough banners? What's enough manpower to take care of it? And does it have women's towers? The results that we would like, which is to advertise to the public.
How many people read that article about not being antiquated in their communication with their residents? It was a very good article that shared about how slow and sluggish and, you know, maybe we need somebody on a horse and a bell running through the township meeting tonight. I mean.
Well, I'll tell you, that will get a lot of attention.
Realistically, just putting it in the newspaper is not enough in today's day and age. It is time. I mean, this newspaper is going to go under any minute anyway. And nobody's reading it. Nobody wants to pay, you know, for what little there is and the ads or.
I, I hear you. And I read that article and the, the, you know, the more modern versions of communication that Mr. Sancho put in there are what we do. He's just trying to make it legally enforceable. There's more advertising, zoning meetings, but obviously just any public information. So we're already doing pretty much all of the concepts, whatever you would say, the modern concepts. We're kind of going back to what can we add to this electronic media.
I mean, things that if they're in the newsletter, it would be more people would see them. The newsletter is beautiful. I mean, it's bright and catches your attention. And when you, when you throw away all your junk mail, that's the one thing people keep. You know, like, I'm gonna leave it here because I might read it and they'll throw it by the couch because I'm, you know.
Scott said, there's a whole year calendar right on. It's, I love that.
It's a nice piece, but not putting important stuff in it is just like dropping the ball.
Calendars in there. Getting on the calendar has every single meaning for the entire year.
But I'm talking about missing subjects, not just meetings.
Uh, I'm here today and I brought my neighbors because I saw the date and the purpose of the meeting today from the signage outside. And I agree with Connie that, um, he's talking about the newsletter. It is a beautiful publication. But again, it's something you can refer to. It's something you can hold. It's something that, you know, I have it in my home until the next week.
Yeah, I keep them.
Because it's a point of reference and it's informative. Uh, it's a lot easier for me to go refer to that rather than onto the, uh, website.
We appreciate everybody's input and if you have other recommendations for.
That was my next question is a couple of months ago, they mentioned that we were going to improve or replace the website, but I've heard not, nothing after that. And I have to say, I've done deep looking for certain things.
Yes.
Usually PDF about a certain project. I can't find it, even with a search, you know, keyword search, it's, it's, it's insane how non-intuitive our website is. I can't wait. We have a new one.
I did bring that up.
Is that in the work?
Cause mine is a budget, right? Thirty grand or something.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of updating our building permit, uh, process right now, but when we're finished that project, we're going to move on to the website. Building permit one's a big one. So we look forward to, we, we recognize that the website needs work. Um, of course, there's a lot of things in the township that, you know, need work, uh, but we're, uh, you know, the website is one of them. So I look forward to getting that one, uh, updated.
I would say that like for me, I don't drive by any big intersections. I'm very close to the town lines and I head out from the back. So I would never see a road sign, but I think they are very serious. What I will, I, I agree, like the newsletter is great. I love the calendar. I rip it off after I finish it, cut it up, wait until the next one. I would highly recommend though, that you look across the board from website to how you post online on township page to the newsletter, that there's consistency in how you write it. So one of them, you put the dates, the others is like the first Tuesday, the second Monday, and you kind of have to go through and go, where's my calendar? Which one's the second one? So like a consistency of the date is, I think, a lot easier and less confusing for people. Is, I think, a lot easier and less confusing for people. Um and also, which is kind of, like, yes, you can kind of use a pattern to it, but it's much faster for people to digest and it's just consistent. But as long as I, I mean, this is making, as long as I think you're doing it in each platform, right? You get something mailed to every house in the town with your dates of those meetings, it's posted online. It's in your newsletter month ahead of time, you've got a whole month of readings printed out. And like, you know. Agendas, you, you don't have an agenda a month ahead of time. You're gonna have to go somewhere to look at that. And that, in my opinion, there's a certain amount of responsibility of us as residents to do that. You can't expect a postcard every time. The cost of that, in my opinion, it's just a drain. Like, I don't wanna see the cost of that. As long as you've got it digital, online, on your website. On Facebook and in a monthly print that goes to every house, then it's kind of up to up. We have to take responsibility to. So consistency is key across all, all areas.
Thank you, Dan. Eric, did you have something?
Yeah, um. I, when I post articles for the newsletter, I'm asked in November. To write something up for the spring, I mean, or January for the spring and November for the, or whatever. There's so much of a lag time between uh having to get the articles in, I guess, to the printer and. Uh actually getting the newsletter, then a lot of that stuff is already outdated before people even get it. So other townships do four newsletters, some do monthly newsletters. I mean, you could do a monthly newsletter online, but you could earth with an email uh last. Or you could do four newsletters a year to keep. People current because, you know, I know for a fact that some meetings we don't hold. So you could put down that we're gonna have a July first meeting next week at Parks and Rec, but then if I don't have an agenda. Well, then here's Connie who doesn't get online, I'm just who's listening. Connie doesn't get online and see that the meeting was canceled, that show up. And we have had people contact me. From Parks and Rec, some of the newer uh folks saying, oh, we thought there was a meeting tonight, you know, because they're looking at an outdated. Calendar. So at minimum, we should have four. At least four newsletters a year that's going out to our residents. I don't know what it would cost to do that, but. There's too much of a lag time between getting those articles done, like, for example, the building committee. You probably didn't even know what you were doing, you know, November published it for the spring. So that would have been outdated by this time you would have gotten to it. So that's my. I'm here tonight um and my neighbor uh for the children of Park Avenue in the township. We have um a very great concern, the residents there. Uh we have a number of younger children than we had in the last few years. Um the children are playing out on the road, there is no shoulder on either side of the road. Um for the children to play on or revert to should a. Fast moving vehicle is going, using Park Avenue as a chute. To uh travel sometimes forty-five, fifty-five miles per hour and that is not an exaggeration. And I'm glad, well, who's the chief here? That's um that area. Because it is pretty much a straight run from Strasburg Road to uh. Mount Carmel, yeah, and uh um that area, I mean, people travels at an exorbitant speed. And my neighbor here has almost, uh she had to avoid or.
Yeah, who else the road, if you imagine you have a stroller, when someone's coming, that scares me, you know, if they're four hundred, at least forty-five, you know, and.
What's the uh boat's speed limit on that?
Thirty-five.
You know, you know, I remember you coming to us several months ago. Is this the same section of road?
Yes, sir.
I believe the chief.
Yes, the chief responded uh very much in a timely manner in which he provided a uh. Uh detection of uh high class people were going, he gave a report, I was here, everything was. Very expedient and uh to the point, but there. Maybe referring to his records how fast they go, but um if maybe we were kind of putting our heads together. Either posting signs, watch children, or maybe um.
Real ones, like are we legally allowed to put some speed bumps on?
You're not allowed.
So there are a bunch of restrictions that PennDOT puts on it. We have to have probably the attachment here to look at.
Even though it's a Tasha bro, PennDOT has to.
Yeah, more than anything, speed bumps um that I've seen going in other communities. They're gonna drive two categories of people crazy. Other than the drivers who are speeding. Number one, the people that live on the road. Because you don't hear it now, but every time someone hits a speed bump, it's making. And that's gonna be twenty-four seven and it's gonna drive you bonkers. The other. Set of folks that it's gonna um drive crazy are gonna be the road crew because. They can't plow that road the same way they have plowed the other road, so it slows them down. I'm just finished. So speed, speed bumps are generally not, I haven't seen them be an effective option.
Well, they do slow drivers down.
No doubt, but is there a way maybe we can post the roads because it has no shoulder. Uh or sidewalk, maybe we can bring that thirty-five to twenty-five mile per hour. Maybe, and not just one sign, where we have one sign from Strasburg to Mount Carmel. But maybe two signs to show that, you know, oh, it's, because I think they'll just look at the. Twenty-five one sign, but if it's, you know, the duplicity might show that we need business.
To, to throw Mike, you said, people ignore signs. We could put a million signs up and people, if they're gonna speed, they're not gonna slow down because there's a speed limit sign.
Why this has continued over the years, but I've been there over forty years and they still have cars going fast. Nothing's been done about it and sometimes retarded any children. Now we have an influx of a lot of young children again. Young, both speaking maybe from uh onwards to maybe uh, yeah.
How about flashing lights? Are we allowed to do that? I know some places they have like flashing lights to help to slow down. We're allowed to do that.
But it's gonna flash.
It's like children playing and then some flashing lights, like a warning. Yeah, and then keep the lights up, you know, the, or attached to the.
Maybe the chief can speak to what. There's any effective policing techniques or other things you've seen that might be.
You were the chief, are we allowed to change the speed on that road?
We are, you have to do a, a traffic engineering study, you have to show that. If you put the, those sign, those things out there to measure how fast people are going and then it's like based on eighty, fifty percentile of how fast people are actually going. One of the things I've seen again elsewhere is, a lot of times, people, as you're, especially as you're walking. You, you perceive cars going a lot faster than they're actually going and you'd be surprised that when you do those studies, you find that. The vast majority of people are going to the speed limit or or. Wouldn't be, would it be easier out the mechanism for putting a stop sign at a Wilmington there? Taking that a four-way stop, just to kind of break that. Yes, same thing. You, you still need an engineering study, believe it or not, for um. Stop signs, especially the intersections, PennDOT looks to see whether you have enough, they call warrants. And then you have to look at the road geometry to make sure, like, PennDOT doesn't like if you put a speed, a, a stop sign, I'm sorry. On a steep downhill, running downhill because it's an old litter, a bus is, somebody's gonna come through and knock, 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 there's a whole like.
I think about Dana, they put a stop sign with a flashing light in that corner where the post office is.
So when you put a new stop sign up for a period of time, PennDOT does require you to put the flashers on top of it, but that goes over, that goes away over time.
Could we put a stop sign at, at uh? What's the one where you wanna put traffic coming? Put a stop sign there, if the traffic coming. From Old Wilmington to Mount Carmel, one at each end or one in the middle to really bring them down.
So my suggestion to our manager is, is it worth asking our. Tasha Benjamin to throw together. A quick thought of what he thinks might be possible and practical.
In the meantime, chief, you're sitting here listening to all this. Went out there and you conduct that little study, so I know you're gonna have the guys when they sit, you can scry up things and people until it stops.
Have you talked to the parents at all about chief?
They're very much in favor of having that, first of all.
I was asking the chief, but I'm, I know, I wanna know what you say too, um but I was asking him first, um, have you talked to the parents?
I haven't heard from anybody but Nina for this one.
Okay, what did the parents say?
We uh have spoken with parents on occasion and they said that, but indeed, the traffic moves at a very, very. Fast pace. We're there in our homes and you can hear the acceleration as the cars go whizzing by. I mean, it's notable, it truly is notable. And um. Mrs. Holland uh is not the only person who said to me in the last month. That they had just averted being struck. And she was walking, she, she lives on Wilmington Road and she had to avert being struck by a truck. That on an evening walk. So uh Mrs. Holland was walking her grandson. And there was an uh, a, a version there to uh being hit. But it's gotten because of the, of their point, where they're going, from where people are going, from Strasburg. To say further out into Mount Carmel, um and uh Glen Rose. Around that area, people, they figure they have an open run, so let's take.
It's straight.
And it, it's, and it is a detriment. And uh so we officially are here for asking for your help. Um as our officials and our police uh chief to see what you can do for us because. This is getting to be a major problem for the safety of our, our residents. And if you're walking on the street, which I might walk at least a half a mile back and forth, take a walk. You know the difference between the speed of one car and another, someone mentioned, they're probably not going over thirty-five. Yes, 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 some of them are.
Chief Osborne, can you do the speed snutty with the Jamar uh unit that we have? I know you said to use the speed display board there. Is that possible?
Chief, do you remember the summary from that report you provided the other year?
I remember it being unremarkable, like I don't, I can't quote your numbers.
I understand, I'm not asking you to remember the data, Max, your general sense.
Let's figure out size on eighty-two all our trucks, all the big trucks coming out of Independence. Round the blacktop. I moved there recently, I've been there five years now. There's not one sign that says no brake retarders for these big trucks. I own several big trucks. They don't need to be used from Al Myers Blacktop, the seventies. They don't need to be used coming down from Weaver's to the stop sign. The hills are not. Enough to make a truck have to slow that far down, that they need that jake brake. I own, I, I use them a couple times, but there's no reason for our midnight crew that they haul from. Gap out to, to us, so if we could put a sign up, I'm not pointing fingers to any other trucker, but. If there could be a sign put up that says no brake retarders in municipal area, that'd be huge. I, I talked to all my residents on eighty-two, they all agree. I don't know how that can be done, I mean, it's, everybody on that road probably agree with me.
So believe it or not, that, that's something also that requires a traffic engineering study, it also gets, it's sort of the MUTCD, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control.
Well, I get in trouble if I just pull one up in front of my house. If I have about three of them, I'm gonna do it.
I just, I just know you, because I've had to do it elsewhere. You need to get PennDOT's approval for it, you need, you do need an engineered study, believe it or not, because they have to do all sorts of assessments. Again, I'm not the engineer, but you have to make sure that like um there isn't a certain slope where they're required or they're gonna need to use.
Going down the big hill down in the town, absolutely.
I still another, another township did it, they spent all this money for it and PennDOT said, yeah, but only for this little stretch community, but.
Just one up Springdale on that hill is.
There's one going down Weaver's Hill, going all the way down to Scottsville, there's one right here. And that's a pretty good grade.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would turn up, but I just feel like the mechanism for doing.
I just thought a township would be good, but I, I didn't understand it. Excellent.
I express a concern, this is where we express our concern, right? Okay, um I, I need to bring something to y'all's attention that's been bothering me for a while since I've lived here. And I'd just like to clarify some things if I could. Uh my name is Bruce Lane. And I'm a disgruntled, very disgruntled president of East Fallowfield Township for seven long years now. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran and I'm on disability. I'm also an active member. And road captain of the Coatesville chapter of the Christian Motorcycle Association. Which is worldwide traveling ministry in over thirty countries. I am, as written in our handbook, one of Christ ambassadors. We pray all around Coatesville and other areas. Locally and in different counties and states. We do bike blessings, church visits, benefits and other events, including First Fridays in Coatesville. We visit many businesses in the area and pray for them. We raise money and run for the sun and other rides annually. I am also an active member of ABATE, which is the Alliance of Bikers, aimed towards education, Chester County chapter. And we ride at the Capitol every year, Harrisburg, uh for our rights rally, and this is for your rights too. Uh this is a very important event and I am blessed to be a part of it. You see, God has a plan and I'm part of that too. Our rights matter just as much as anyone else's and we fight for everyone who rides, drives and uses the road in any fashion. I am active in my church. And I'm a member of Good Stand for some time now. I helped run a twelve-step program, alcohol program in Doordale. And it is very successful and costs taxpayers nothing. It is a voluntary program and it works, we pay for it. We are very cohesive and hold each other to account. I've been doing this for eight and a half years now and it is called There's a Solution, benefits each individual as well as the community, all are welcome. I'm certified in motorcycle first aid and motorcycle safety. I'm active in the elections, commissioners meetings, town hall meetings. And recently, these township meetings. My mission has been clear and I've been led to fulfill that mission. I pay for everything I do, nobody pays me. My life in Chester County has been anything but pleasant or fun by any means. My mother tried to kill me when I was very young and no one said anything, but that was the sixties. I survived, obviously, but it didn't stop there. My mother used to drop me off at Mrs. Parker's house in Downingtown. When she was cheating on my dad while he was at work. This was a black family who lived by the elementary school. That is where I was introduced to racism. I was continually picked on at school by the black kids and other kids. And they would take my lunch money. This was Downingtown. The teacher gave me the paddle, black kids laughed and the teacher was white. My mother beat me up, the neighborhood kid beat me up, teachers hit me a lot, I was beat up almost every day. They would take my stuff. I was on the Little League baseball team and football teams. I was never allowed to play. They would just sit and make fun of me. My parents divorced when I was seven and everything changed. My father remarried and mental abuse began. She never stopped. I started drinking, doing drugs and stopped caring about anything or anyone. No one ever understood and still doesn't. I was an easy target and the police blamed me for a lot of things and they still do. Since I moved here, moved here to East Fallowfield, it has been a very unpleasant, unwelcoming environment to say the least. I have been threatened, attacked, judged. Witnessed illegal activities right in my front yard, which I was confronted about as if I was being implicated. My property has been invaded, trespassed on by many, including the police, which is illegal unless you have a warrant. I know my rights and they have been violated in many ways. I've had alcohol bottles planted in my driveway, which I don't drink. My political signs have been taken, drones floating over my property, taxes are out of control and evil. I have been slandered, defamed, almost run off the road by the police recently on West Chester Road. And hung up on when I called the township. I tried to sue a man a few years ago to rip me off big time, but the judges wanted to put me in jail in Redding. I was told to sit down and shut up. I couldn't even get an attorney because they told me I couldn't afford it. My daughter was raped years ago in, in the state of Indiana and. My daughter was raped years ago in, in the state of Indiana, and mistreated, molested, and then given to me like that. She was ten when I got her back. Right after she was born, I was chased down at my work by the police and taken away in front of everyone. I didn't see my daughter again until she was ten. She was damned. Then she came here to Pennsylvania. In two, two thousand and ten, she was stalked by a Pennsylvania state trooper while she was waiting for the school bus. I had to chase him away, then I had to change her bus stop. Now she hates me, I haven't seen her or my two granddaughters for over two years now, because they think everything is my fault. My family has just owned me for the same reason. I live alone down my home up the street here on Goose Down, and I feel that is constantly trying to be taken away from me. I wait every day for the Gestapo to come and charge me with some trumped-up crime. Well, think again, because you had picked on the wrong marine, Christian biker, to accuse of anything or tax me to death with your unconstitutional laws of disrepresentation and greed. I took an oath upon entering the Marine Corps years ago, and that oath lasts forever. And that oath consists of fighting foreign and domestic enemies, which I'm doing right now. I have every God-given right to defend myself, have a fair trial, which I've never had. Fair taxation, fair elections, which are tainted, it seems to me that my income and disability automatically become yours. You don't deserve my earned disability, I don't feel safe, as I have mentioned before, and as mentioned before, I have no trust in the police department, and they have never protected me. But the criminals are just products of your school systems, which may be a lot to be desired. My daughter was continually berated and put down by the kids at Coatesville School, a lot of them were black. And she did not have to deal with it, nor the gay things that she was asked, confronted about by the gay kids and whatever back then. Uh, I, I've heard words and hear about transparency and accountability, which are thrown around frequently. And, uh, I, I don't, I, I, transparency is, I see right through what you're trying to do. Uh, I'm not attacking anyone, or am I suicidal? I don't want violence, only answers, justice, and to be respected. Not treated like a criminal, because I'm not one of them. I've waited fifty-six years for this, and if this is the way you treat veterans who fought and are still fighting, then may God have mercy on your soul. Read your Bible, looks like this. Read your constitution, read your state constitution, which looks like this. Know your rights, read your constitution, and read your oaths, reread your oaths, because I don't think a lot of you are upholding your oaths. I think this is God's will, and I too, and with law enforcement, I enforce God's law. Just know that He's watching, and so am I. God bless you all, that's all I have, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want you to know that I have something in common with you, uh. I was bullied when I was young. I've never forgotten a lot of it, I think many people have been bullied. But, uh, it stays, but there's an article right here you might wanna read, lasted a lifetime, never goes away. I'm sixty-six years old. I just wanted to acknowledge that piece.
Thank you.
Nice. All right, like to make a call to adjourn?
It's about permits, uh, I pulled a permit back in February uh, for a holding pile dirt that falls under a grading permit, so I went through the proper procedures, and that was February eighteenth. Expected maybe in three weeks, four weeks, I would get this. Uh, months have gone by, and I was told that I was supposed to have a meeting with the engineer, township engineer. My engineer and him already have been together. I thought this thing was gonna sail through. It's now months later for a holding pile dirt that I wanna beautification of crimes junkyard, I wanna level it, wanna try to get it better. I paid a lot of money, paid eight thousand dollars for permit for my engineering, that was requested by you guys. I now missed out on my dirt, and I still don't have a permit for a simple dirt pile. I don't understand this, like, I'm so upset, I have more words to say, but you got the gist of what I'm looking at.
Scott.
Uh, I know our township engineer's on vacation right now. I'm just telling you, I will reach, I will reach out to him when he comes back, I believe he's coming back this week, to get an update.
I just don't know why I took this many months, I talked to two other townships, they issued these permits within three weeks. It's not a huge thing, and it just, they forgot about it, I reminded them. I got emails, it's crazy.
How much dirt?
I wanna get a lot of dirt, and I was getting thousands of yards of dirt, and now I missed out on that. Hundreds of thousands of dollars that I can't afford, I spent eight grand to do this. I need my money back, because now I don't know what I'm gonna do.
I mean, you, you have the dirt, or you.
I lost the dirt, no, the, 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 I didn't have my permit, they went somewhere else, because they're not gonna dump without a permit.
Oh, okay.
And I applied for the permit, and I made it all right. Nothing, and I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'd say eight thousand bucks out of my pocket, trying to beautify my property for my development and my future, all because I didn't get a permit, I'm just blown away. Really upset.
The question I must throw out as a general question, relative to our solicitor is, for these local, different types of permits, is there any type of requirement of what these turnaround times should be, what they are, is there a legal process in it, or covers things like this?
No, it depends what kind of permit, I, depends on what kind of permit it is, if it's a land development application, if there's a stormwater permit, a grading permit, or whatever else.
Just a simple grading permit, the whole dirt. Anything you can do while you're getting an addition put on. You gotta hold and contain your dirt, all of it.
No, I was gonna say, we'll follow up with, uh, Panoni, our township engineer, to find out what the holdup is.
I appreciate it, yeah, I'm.
So my question now is, in this specific case, is there an opportunity to refund this gentleman, the permit?
I, I never walked into the situation, I don't know.
Act on refunding this if the permit is never.
I have to get the details from our township engineer.
Do you have the gentleman's name?
I have your number, Dean.
Not to pile on that, but didn't we just purchase like a new permitting system or something that's supposed to speed that up? Or is that not going to affect yet?
It's not in effect yet, we're still bringing it together.
How many of the permits fall through the cracks? Like, was it a, was it a forgotten, was it a process issue, was it ignored? How did it happen?
I don't have any details on beans, I said I would reach out to the engineer for an update.
Dean, did you reach out to, just, I don't need. My engineers contact your engineer, and back and forth, and I've made several visits here. I'm mugging, and I already talked to Sue or Denise or Scott, or I, the last thing I was told, uh, my wife wrote it down. I was in here three weeks ago, when I still had the dirt, I still come. It was supposed to be a meeting, set up, and it had nothing to do with our zoning officer. It just had something to do with our engineering. Missed out on. Just trying to understand, I know there's multiple parts and different people. You guys, it's all data, it's from you guys. Not disagreeing, got you.
Thank you for sharing that.
So what, what are we doing until the system's implemented? So that, I mean, do we regularly look at what permits are outstanding, how long they've been outstanding, is there a burn down list?
There's more to it than that, this is a little bit different, it's, um, stormwater management, land development, it's not specific building permit. I believe Panoni has a certain way of responding when they approve something with an email that says, your permit has been approved, given the following conditions, including doing a pre-construction meeting, so they very well may have told you that you could go ahead with it. There's no yellow, there's no yellow permit, I was out on medical leave. So I don't know what happened, but that should have been your go-ahead, but, sorry. But there's a lot more than what people are thinking, you know, let's just ask, pay any attention to permits, we do. There's more to it.
I do, it wasn't in the office, so I'm not pointing for any fingers here, I just missed out on a big opportunity, I need everybody to hear.
I believe this, I'm emailing him right now, so I promise I'll get back to you, Dean.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead and motion to adjourn. All in favor?